So I think we're going to go ahead and get started. We'll hopefully look at the livestream up and running by the time we get to the presentation, but we do have a lot of attendees who've registered, so we want to honor your time. Let me welcome all of you. Thanks so much for joining us. I'm Jenny Lacos Caputo. I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Community Relations for Round Rock ISD. So we did have, we were capped at 500 people for this webinar. We are applying for a license to move up to 1,000, so when we have town halls in the future, which I'm sure we'll be doing more of this, we'll be able to accommodate even more of you. But thanks so much for registering. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a welcome from our superintendent. After that, our panelists are going to go over a brief presentation about public health guidelines and safety measures when we're all coming back to campus, which of course, we can't wait to welcome our students back. And when we do, we want to do so safely. And after that time, if you use your Q and A function there at the bottom of your screen to enter questions, I'll be asking those of the panelists. I know that we might have a lot of them. We'll get to as many as we can. We're going to be capturing them as well, and we'll be using those for an FAQ for our reimagining education website, where we'll also post a video of this town hall along with the presentation that you're going to see. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Steve Flores.
Thanks so much, Jenny, and welcome, and thank you for joining us.
Sir, unmute your microphone?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Jenny? All right. Thank you, Jenny, and welcome, and thank you for joining us. I'm Steve Flores, the proud superintendent of Round Rock ISD. We're glad you're joining us, whether you're on the webinar or watching the livestream, or even a recorded version of this event later. Our purpose with these town halls is to bring our subject matter experts who have been working day in and day out for months to plan a safe reopening of our school for students and staff, and to answer your questions, address any concerns you may have. As you all know by now, we'll be beginning the school year scheduled on August the 20th, but we will be 100% virtual the first three weeks. We're very hopeful we'll be able to welcome students back to campus, but we'll also continue to offer a virtual option. Today's town hall will focus on safety measures. I will let our panelists introduce themselves, but these are experts from areas such as operations, transportation, food services, and health services. Our Chief Operations Officer, Terry Wooster, and Area Superintendent Natalie Nichols spearheaded this committee, and we'll thank them for their hard work. We have more town halls, and hope you'll tune into those as well. Wednesday, we'll be talking about a virtual learning platform, and our student services will be delivered. The next week, on Tuesday and Thursday, we'll have general overview sessions, with Tuesdays focusing on elementary, and next Thursday's, middle and high school. Thank you again for your patience and support as we navigate these unprecedented times. Please know that in everything we do, the health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff is our top priority. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wooster and Ms. Nichols to get us started this evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And it is my privilege to share the chairmanship of the committee that we call the Safety and Facilities Committee. And we have a short presentation that we would like to share with you today. As this committee has been in formation and has been working throughout the last many weeks, the work of this committee is dependent upon numerous people. It's not just a few people. And again, as I mentioned, I'm very privileged to share the work of this committee with Ms. Natalie Nichols, the Area Superintendent of Stony Point Learning Community. But there are others who need to be mentioned here, in that this committee was subdivided into three subcommittees. And those subcommittees focused on the physical learning environment, as well as the operational part of the learning environment, and transportation. And so Ms. Sharon Wilks chaired the Physical Learning Environmental Subcommittee, and Ms. Lisa Geinert chaired the Operational Learning Environment Committee, as well as Ms. Tina Fawcett chaired the Transportation Committee. And so with those many, many people who supported us, there were several safety measures that came out of our work within this committee. And if you can see our presentation here, I'll direct your attention to the right side of the slide. One of the things that's most important in regard to COVID-19 protections is face coverings. And we know that face coverings come in many forms and many styles and many fashions. And so the face coverings that we're focusing on, of course, are student face coverings, and adult face coverings, and face shields. Now, of course, face coverings don't come in one size fits all, or they do, they tend to be that way. So as a district, we're focusing on being able to ascertain and collect student-sized face coverings, as well as face shields, and of course, adult face coverings and face shields. And so currently, in warehouse, we have hundreds of thousands of different styles of these face coverings. So our intention is to have enough to have an initial distribution when we come back to in-person learning. Also, one of the important parts of the environment is to be able to have tools, such as hand-free thermometers, so that we can consistently check temperatures throughout the, throughout the school day with students and staff in the school. And an important component of in-person learning is to be able to sanitize. And within that sanitation, that comes down to wipes and squirt bottles and things of that nature. And so we have in our possession, and acquiring more white buckets similar to this, and where is full of paper waxes and pre-measured solution that is non-fragranced, and checked through MDS inspections, that we have those abilities to keep the environment sanitized and cleaned, and being able to support a safe, a safe transition from one place to another. Also, we have many installations of hand sanitizers. By way of TEA guidelines, it's recommended that hands-free sanitizers are installed at entrances and places of much activity, such as cafeteria or movements around the building. So currently, we have hand-free sanitizers available to us. And as we work with those hand sanitizers, we'll be placing those in different places, locations within the building, in all facilities. As well as one of the, one of the important parts of working with COVID-19 protections is that there are contractors that are available to us, and we are working with different contractors for different services. As you see listed here, one called Germ Blast Sanitation. And so as we work to improve that environment holistically, people such as, or contractors such as Germ Blast, come into the building and sanitize in a magnificent way. As well as one of the very, very important parts of COVID works is that we have a campus contact. This campus contact and/or person who is assigned to, to work with the district is a person who is stationed at the school site. And their roles are very important, in that they provide support to staff with students, being able to maintain and, and keep an information flow going forward, and really focus on the flexibility of the changes that, that we all experience. They assign roles to staff in regards to what needs to be done, in ways of training for sanitation uses, as well as being able to coordinate responsibilities. One of the things that is most important is that this, this contact is a person who works to coordinate and ascertain campus needs, so that we in operations support can respond to those needs. And then, most importantly, work in partnership with the site administration, so that principals and assistant principals and all staff are in compliance with our ISD COVID-19 guidelines. The other important aspect of, of the learning environment is how we deal with visitors visiting the facility. And so we're going to be focusing on essential visitors to the building, and only essential visitors will have access to the building. And those individuals or those groups of people include emergency personnel, they include guest educators, mail and/or package delivery, brings, and not, not parents. And we're, we're very emphatic about not parents and volunteers, simply because we have to maintain the integrity of a sanitized environment. On the, on the other side of the equation in regards to just physical, physical preparations, we have been working to install bottle fillers throughout the district. And currently, we're focusing on installing and having operational a minimum of two bottle fillers per campus. Now, we understand that campuses are quite large and with multiple buildings, and so that is just a minimum. We're, we're working to add numerous bottle fillers in every building, and, and as many as possible, as well as we are focusing on improving our air quality within the environment. We are working to sanitize the ductwork that was, that is within the building themselves, as well as installing devices that are called ionization devices, and that helps improve the supply or the delivery of supply air. And so those projects are ongoing, and will take time to, to develop fully, but they are ongoing. We're focusing on signage, so that within, within the school facilities, signage is such that we have directional arrows, and be able to have informational posters and/or placards, and be able to have instructional signage, and washing hands, and things of that nature. So a big component of working within our facility for when we come back in person is being able to accomplish and have in place signage. As well as when we begin to look at the likelihood that at some point, we may have to isolate a student and/or staff person, so we've identified isolation spaces. And those isolation spaces are, are important to the health services, so that in the event that we have a symptomatic person, that symptomatic person can be taken to an isolation room or space. And then, last but not least, we are working to put and install partitions and shields. And those partitions will be such that they'll be at counters, and they'll be at cashiers, and they'll be in different places as we work and, and use the facility. So there's much, much going on. These topics are fairly high level. There are dense, very dense details that follow below these, in how we're inputting and installing these different systems and products, just as safety measures for when we return to facilities in person. And so with that high-level look, and then knowing that there are other details in our following slides, I defer to my colleague, Ms. Natalie Nichols.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have quite a bit of slides to go through, so just a slight disclaimer before we start. What's important to us is that we give you a sense of the things that we will be putting in place, but we don't want to necessarily read through each of the slides. So I'll go through, and I will be giving you information from each of our different areas. And all of those things are going to work around four major aspects that we're looking at. One of the things we're looking at throughout our building is, number one, we want to as much as possible limit contact. That means that throughout these different slides in the building environments, you'll see example of touchless processes and procedures, and also specifically where we're looking at limiting how we move about the space, so that also we can look at contact tracing. We will have extensive throughout all the different slides, the idea of the protocols for the different, cleaning of the different things throughout the school day. Education is a huge part of this, and not just for our staff, but also for our teachers and our students. And then also, as Teri spoke to, the idea of protective gear, and not just personally for us as individuals, also for the different things that we introduce within our spaces. So, so far, within this slide, one of the things that I then wanted to highlight for you was the idea that we're trying to make sure that specifically what we do within our spaces aligns with our learning, specifically what we're doing as far as how we're looking at instruction. So what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be limiting student movement throughout the day, and that's will be coming up in our presentation on Wednesday, a virtual presentation on Wednesday. But we're going to be limiting specifically based on the schedules that are created, student movement, so that we can reduce risk. And we're also asking that students throughout, everyone within our buildings, are wearing some form of face covering. Again, a face covering can be a mask, cloth, and/or the hospital ones many of us are wearing, and/or it can be a shield. We're not designating just one type, or you can wear two, both the shield and something else. But those are the main pieces that I wanted to make sure that we spoke to, as far as what we're putting in place within our learning environment. If you can go to the next slide? All right. And then also within here, one of the things to highlight, and that Teri alluded to, was the idea of visitors within our space. We're used to, and we enjoy within our district, tons of visitors and volunteers, but we're going to have to limit what that looks like. And so also to know then, the visitors that will be allowed within our spaces will be required to wear face coverings at all time, before they're granted access to our buildings. Another things to know is that we have been since last couple of years, putting in place electronic video intercom system, and that's going to be a key and a component of our safety measures, as far as can we take care of business without needing for the person to come within the building as well. We will, you have protective plexiglass partitions. Thank for those of you who have turned your, your questions in regards to that, that will look different in every space. So how it may look in a front office is different from how it will be utilized in the cafeteria, and again, different from how it will be utilized in the classroom space. Even though we will be putting six feet of distance in between everyone, we will still be using plexiglass partitions in all of our spaces throughout the building. Next slide, please. In regards to athletics, know then, we are really subject not just to local and state guidelines. And for local guidelines, it can be anything from the county to the city we're in, but also specifically, we're looking at UIL, TEA, Texas Education Agency, and the governor, as far as to let us know exactly what's allowed. In general, though, just unlike all of our other spaces, there will be strict sanitation policies in place. Masks will be worn when students are not involved in high-intensity exercise, and when they are involved in high-intensity exercise, then we will make sure that social distances is being, social distancing is being put in place, on top of reducing the size of the indoor working groups. Next slide, please. Now, within fine arts, did we skip fine arts? Okay, there we go. One of the things to know within fine arts is that every space is completely different. Within this document, it's embedded something called a safety protocol document. The safety protocol document has listed specifically the protocols for each of the different subjects within fine, because what we put in place in band is going to be different, what we put in place within choir, and different again from what we put in place within orchestra, and also different from elementary to middle to high school, based on level of activity and the size of the room. So we want everyone to know that that exists, but that is going to be highly, highly stratified as far as what those safety measures look like within each of those different areas. Next slide. Within food and services, we're going to be utilizing for both lunch and breakfast, and a grab-and-go style, and also what we have recommended is that students will be eating in their classroom. The reason for that is, again, one of the things we hold there is that idea of limiting the amount of contacts that students are having. So we're limiting large groups of students in large group, which mean that students will be eating within their classrooms and utilizes those spaces. And of course, within food services, we will be utilizing precautions, as far as all the different temperatures for the personnel, the partitions, a touchless paying system, and so forth. Next slide. Within the nurse's office, one of the key areas that we have to look at is the idea of how do we triage students based on their needs? And so if you can go to the next slide, that sums that up a little bit better. And so in looking at then, that we have a general waiting area, we have a well-student area, and then specifically, an isolation area where students who are maybe showing symptoms of COVID-19, where that will be the waiting area for the parents in order to pick them up. Also, make sure that you check out the links that gives guidance as far as the resources that we're basing all these decisions on. Next slide. Within transportation, we are doing, like with every other space, safety measures for the staff, but also safety measures for our students as well. This year, one of the things that we will be doing is sending out information for our parents, specifically to let us know their intent, as far as whether or not their student will be riding the buses. With this information, then, what we will be able to put in place is to reduce the number of students possibly on a route, of the, all the other things that we're putting, the hand sanitizer, face coverings, potentially the, not potentially, but distancing in between the different routes, all of those things as well. But the major thing that we want to do is reduce the number of students being served on each bus. So where we'll be asking for information from parents, so that we can look at who is going to be riding on what routes, to see if potentially, we can allocate buses to different routes in order to reduce those numbers. So as you get those surveys, please play, pay acute attention to that, and send that information in, so we can best serve you. Next slide, please. Next slide? All right. And so here's a piece that's very important to you. I know we went through that at a high level, and this information will be available on our reimagining information page on our Round Rock ISD website. But what we felt was very important was to make sure that we took your questions, and maybe really answered some of your concerns, or have those questions tell us about blind spots that we're not addressing in our system right now, so that we can start working and take it, get those things taken care of. All right. Jenny, to you.
Thank you so much, Natalie. We want to make sure that we introduce all our panelists, so you know who you're talking with, and, and what role they play in the district. So panelists, if you could go ahead and unmute and be ready, I'll start with Dwayne Wirick, if you can introduce yourself, sir.
Yes, Dwayne Wirick, Director of Athletics.
Sharon Wilks.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Wilks. I'm the Area Director of Academics for the Round Rock Learning Community.
And Tina Fawcett. You're muted, Tina.
I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina Fawcett, and I'm the Director of Transportation.
Yana?
Hello, my name is Yana Colvin. I'm the Food Service Director for the District.
Brandy?
Hi, my name is Brandy Hafner. I'm the Director of Health Services.
Thanks, Brandy. And we have Heather and Pam are helping us out, translating for our hearing impaired. Lisa? Not sure.
Yeah, Lisa was not able to get her connection to work, but we also have Lisa Greinert, who works with us as well. She's the Director of Community Education.
Okay, thanks so much. And I do apologize, we've had, it's our first time, had a few technical difficulties. We are live streaming now. The entire town hall is being recorded, and we'll post it as soon as tomorrow morning for everyone to, to see, both on our Board of Trustees webpage and on YouTube. We're getting some questions about virtual learning. Those experts are going to be online with us Wednesday, so if you could save those questions, although I'll say, a lot of the answers are available on our reimagining education website and the full document, if you take a look at that. The first one, Teri, I believe it'll be for you. Does each of the schools have system-wide AC or fan to filter air school-wide, much like a home AC system?
Of course, every, every school system in the district has a cooling system or a heating system. And so consequently, that goes back to the discussion I was having before, is that that supply air and return air comes through a unit, and then, of course, goes back as a supply air into a, a learning environment, or some sort of environment that is occupied. So our focus on, on being able to improve our air quality is to, one, look at the, the opportunity to sanitize all of the ductwork, the existing ductwork in our schools. Much of our school facility is aged, and so we're going back to clean and sanitize the ductwork. And then, as we're able to accomplish that, begin to engineer and begin to improve the, the supply air by way of the use of a, of a ionization system. And so that ionization system improves that air quality by way of supplies as well.
Thank you, Teri. This next one, Natalie might be able to weigh in, also Dr. Flores, if he'd like to. What factors would cause you to move the start date for in-person learning? And as everyone knows, at this point, we are going to start virtual for the first three weeks, and we're planning to start in-person learning on September 10th, for those who choose that.
Ms. Jenny, I will defer to Dr. Flores. That is definitely a Dr. Flores question.
Yeah, our hope again, as we start virtual for the first three weeks, obviously, August the 20th, we, we feel comfortable that, you know, I want to thank our board for supporting last week, that we would not start August the 20th in person. Now, we want to start in person as soon as possible. We also want to do so when it's safe to do so. And so I think the question says, when will we feel safe? And the governor, I mean, actually, the Texas Education Agency also last week has allowed for further flexibility for local school districts. So for us right now, what we want to continue to do is hold steady to continue to monitor, you know, the, the daily COVID rates and, and all the things going around, not only in our state, but in our local areas, Williamson County and Travis County. So with that, we monitor that daily, we look at that, and we want to make sure that, that we feel comfortable that we can continue to, to provide a quality instruction. We'll do so virtually, as long as we feel that, that we can continue to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. And that has been our guiding principle, number one, the safety and students of, safety and, and health of our students and staff is priority one. But again, this is some, you know, these are some tough times. I talk daily with area superintendents throughout the, the local area and throughout the state. And one of the things we always are continuous to monitor right now, is if school were to start, let's say, August 20th, with what we know, the high rates of, of the COVID virus right now, we would probably be asking again, for a little bit more time to allow to heal. So we also have Brandy Hafner, who speaks daily. I don't think, Brandy, I think you introduced yourself earlier, but she's again, in contact with the local health authorities at the county, in Williamson and Travis on a daily basis. So you want to add anything else, Brandy, and then we'll turn it over to Natalie, if she has anything else to add to that.
No, I mean, we just, we have so many different people that we are answering to. We follow the guidance from the CDC. I mean, I throw about a bunch of anacronyms right now. So the CDC, Centers for Disease Control, TEA, you know, Texas Education Agency, UIL, DSHS, that's the Department of State Health Services, in addition to our state and county guidance. So being that our district straddles two counties, we'll follow the strictest guidelines for either of our counties to be consistent and to have equity among the district. But that's a lot of people to answer to, and we're really just trying to do what's safe for all the kids in our care. It's, the guidance is constantly changing, so we will be following with what, with what they ask us to do.
So this question, we don't have our Director of Fine Arts on the line, but I believe some of the other folks might be able to, to address this. I would like to know how activities, for example, band are going to be handled safely, either virtually or in person, as an activity where many of the students cannot wear masks, when instruments cannot be played wearing masks, for example. They're wondering if outside band or other classes could be considered as an option, particularly activities like singing.
And so I'll go ahead and take that one, Jenny. Within the document, and for us, fine arts, that was a huge question we asked, because there was not a one-size-fits-all within all the different things within fine arts. So once this is posted, you will see that document with the protocols, and the protocols that goes through. So as we're in a virtual environment, of course, then the classes will be virtual. Once we come back and we are face-to-face, if people elect to come back within the classroom space, then they already have a process for that. So within the document, what it will tell you is for each level and for each type of class, based on where we are within health guidelines, they will tell you then, that the safety precautions that are being put in place. Some of the safety precautions may be that, hey, we're able, we have to space out for a certain amount, the classes may have to be put in smaller units, we may have to subdivide differently, certain aspects of the class may be outside. So different protocols in place for each of the different fine arts classes that relates to different levels. So that's a very different question, because you are right. How I will treat choir is very different from how I may treat band or art or something else. And so they've delineated for each of those different areas, what the safety protocols look like if we were to be in a face-to-face environment.
Thank you, Natalie. This question, I think is probably answered in our document, but get to highlight, Brandy, you might be the best person to answer this. Has Round Rock ISD considered opt-in classes with a Has Round Rock ISD considered opt-in classes with a mask requirement for students under 10, for children with health conditions and others with heightened concern around COVID-19 transmission? This would be valuable for peace of mind as masks are a proven method of drastically lessening the transmission risk.
Yeah, I saw that question. That's a great idea. We haven't discussed that. We did, we did lessen the time that younger kids can, second grade and under would have their masks on for some developmental reasons, but there is true what the, what the question asker was saying. It is true that it is better to have your mask on all day long if it's possible. So if, you know, if it's possible, teachers in those classrooms will be setting the tone at the beginning of the year, especially when we're starting virtually, building that classroom community, working with all of the players in the game, teaching everybody how we're here to protect ourselves and trying to get everybody to wear their mask as much as possible. If there's times when you can be socially distant in the classroom and take those masks off, there are some times when we're going to allow that in the, in the lower classrooms. But for now, we haven't explored that option. It is something to look into. It's, it's a good idea. Thanks for writing that.
So one of the things that we've talked about, and again, everything is changing by the minute, is the idea of what we can, we feel that we can expect from our older kiddos where there's more of an understanding might be very different from what we can expect from our littles. So what we've talked about would be the fact that we will ask for that master wand inside the building at all times because within that space, you never know within six feet of another person. We do understand that that might be a little bit difficult for our younger students. So what Teri and his team has looked into is finding face masks that will fit their faces so that way there is not that, that conundrum as far as having the, our littles keep those masks on. Because remember, within the document, it does not specifically say masks, it's face coverings. So within our space, it's either a mask or a shield. And so what we think might be more appropriate for our younger students, and those are the ones we're looking at potentially pre-K through second grade, is more so the use of the versus the use of the mask. And as far as the professionals in the building, they have the choice of either and/or both as well. And as I'm looking at the questions, one of the things to know is that as a school district, what we're looking into is being able to provide all of our staff with a face shield and a face mask. But because we will not have enough to be able to supply for their entire school year, it's kind of like a starter kit. The face shield can be worn over and over again with the right and then we would ask for our teachers and our parents for our students, then be able to build up a supply of masks for your students if that is a type of face covering that you're going to use within the, the building space.
And if I can add a little bit to that Natalie, we also are looking at Plexiglas shields. And so when we are talking about teachers and students having some one-on-one or some small group time, we would be looking at perhaps a divider between the teacher and the student so that they can be close and see the work that's happening. But in addition, it'll be a Plexiglas shield to keep them safe.
Thank you Natalie and Sharon. We've had some questions that I believe we have some state guidance that we follow around protocols if there is a confirmed case of COVID-19 on a campus, how, how parents are notified, et cetera. Brandy, would that be you?
Yeah, we will notify all teachers and staff and families of all students in a school if there's a lab confirmed case of COVID-19. It's not, it wouldn't just be one classroom. It would be per the state guidance, it's, it would be the whole school that would be notified.
There's another question that we've, we've often discussed here at the district level, enforcing mask wearing. What has our conversation been around that for students?
Is that to me?
I'm happy to take that.
I would be in charge of discipline as far as that goes. That's a conversation for somebody with a
So one of the things that we talked about is that obviously, we're going to take into consideration the age of the child. But that being said, we plan on asking our students to all wear their masks. And if they are not complying, then rather than a punishment or a consequence, they will be asked to be picked up by the parent. So we will be asking parents to pick up their students if they refuse after many, many times of having been asked to wear their masks. Just for the safety, we can't control, of course, all aspects, but we are very reasonable and we will work with the students, especially at the age appropriateness level. But then if they refuse and absolutely refuse, we will be contacting parents.
Our hope is that through extensive professional development and modules that we'll be putting out to the parents and the students, that everyone will understand the importance of it and it's not just about me, but also as far as everyone in the room. And it's a matter of just being able to ensure that everyone is safe. So our plan of action is not so much more, so much one of consequence. We're hoping that with the seriousness of this and all the professional development modules that we're putting out to everyone, those things will be few and far in between. We do have a mechanism, as with all things, in order to deal with those disruptions. But our choice would not be able to put it in the system as a consequence, but more so, hey, this is what's required in this face-to-face environment. And if it's not something that you feel that you can do, then we will respectfully ask that you take advantage of maybe a virtual environment may be best for you.
Thanks so much for, I, I like the staff's answer and it really isn't something that we, we hope to spend a lot of time for punitive measures because we want our students in the classroom and we want them learning. But we also want to provide the assurance that we're taking these protocols seriously. So the point we get to, let's say, September the 10th, if all things considered, if, if we, that's when our first in-person day would be. And again, there's still parents that are, are still opting whether it's virtual or in-person. So you're going to have that choice. But our expectation, the closer we get to in-person, is that parents also assist us in stressing the importance. And I think everybody gets that right now, the importance of wearing masks to protect not only themselves, but more so to protect others. So we will definitely try to provide this peace of mind with age appropriateness and everything else that goes with that. But the expectation, we will be following whatever the governor's orders are. And again, as you know, all of us know that these changes can occur on a daily or hourly basis, but we will be following those orders, thus those expectations will, will be something that we adhere to. So thanks for that question.
Another question, I think Teri touched on this briefly in the presentation, but how will contracted companies or visitors that do need to come to a campus, how will they be screened prior to entering a facility?
As a, thank, thank you for the question and thank you Jenny. As a visitor arrives to the campus, we, we are going to have that person announce themselves on the outside of the, outside of the, the campus. And so they don't just come through the doors and, and into the administration area. So a visitor that arrives at the campus has to notify that they're, they're here and they're outside the doors. From that point, that there is a screening process. Someone will come to the, to the, that, or to greet that visitor and obviously go through the same pre-screening that all staff goes through and to make sure that that person is not just coming into the facility. And so that will be the case for each and every visitor. And we, we went through the, the visitors that are essential to the, to the operations of school. And, and again, that situation will be enforced for parents. Parents will not be allowed inside the building as well as volunteers, simply for obvious reasons. But this pre-screening for those who are entering the building will be enforced as well.
Thank you, Teri. We had a question about what will recess look like at the elementary level when we're back in, in school? Considering social distancing.
So one of the things that we've been looking at is how we can effectively clean the spaces. And at this time, the use of playground equipment that we're looking at will vary by the number of students who are actually attending face-to-face, the size of the campus, in order to see that we are able to have custodians clean the playground equipment between classes, between students. And certainly knowing that we need to keep that social distance guideline, we would, instead of perhaps having more of the free recess that we've been thinking of, instead, we would have teachers who would provide games, some sports games that are more structured so that they are not just let loose and not practicing some social distance guidelines. So it would have to be more of a structured recess than we have had in the past. And again, it will depend very much on the number of students and the feasibility of cleaning the space between classes going in and out.
Thank you. This is an interesting question. Will parents be able to view the classroom and meet the teacher before sending their children into this new in-person learning environment? That'll be very different than what they're used to. I can contribute partially to this, but then I'll let the committee members chime in. My team, I, I had the communications team, we are currently working on a video so parents can see what the space looks like with the, the desks apart, with Plexiglas, really walking people down the hallway so they understand how we're doing the, the One Direction in hallway. So we will be doing our best to take you in virtually. My guess, and I'll let Teri or Natalie weigh in, is that again, we want to make sure we keep visitors even, even early on to a minimum. Would I be right in that assumption, Teri?
That is correct. You can imagine the touch surfaces that may go along with a, a cohort of students in the playground area on a play apparatus. And it's, it's very hard to, to manage and sanitize that apparatus. So the, the coordination of, of, I guess, how would, how would you describe a, a managed game or a managed activity is highly important. So for those reasons, the, the gymnasium, by way of use of separations and things of that nature, will be an important space to use within the facility.
And so if I can add to that, what I'm hearing is oftentimes at the start of the school year, we will have a meet the teacher where you come in, you drop off supplies and all those different things. So if I'm understanding correctly, that's where I think they're asking a meet the teacher, but also at the same time to see what the different space looks like. Know that in talking to the campus principals, one of the things that they are doing is the plan to move all their different things that would usually be face-to-face, like the different camps for the new students and creating something virtually so that the parents and the students can view. And so we have not talked about it specifically, but I do believe that with the, the elementary principals, middle and high, we can absolutely put that on our agenda to create something that speaks more so to a virtual meet and greet and meet the teacher because it's the plans that we've had for the different fish camps and cub nights and different things for coming back to school. So that would be something we can definitely put in place. And I'll put down to speak to my boss, Dr. Presley, and the other area superintendents about so that we can talk to our principals and see how we can make that happen for our community.
I think that was great. I mean, the key there is Natalie points out is a campus-specific question. And I also understand how parents want a peace of mind of what it would look like, the classrooms would look like. So obviously Jenny, I think that's a great idea that a virtual look at that, what an elementary classroom will look like per se in the entire district and also middle and high school. But also I think in the end, it still comes back to the, the contact with the campus principal. Or actually, if you say, you know, I just need to feel better about this. And as we get closer to September 10th, that might be something that, like Natalie points out, a great idea for how they can be creative in allowing parents to feel that, that there's more confidence in, in sending their child in person for that first day of school, September 10th. Again, I, I keep saying the first day of school as an in-person, that would be September 10th as of today. The first day of school, virtual for everyone, is August the 20th. So, so that's within about a month from today, actually a month from today.
And I know Teri touched on, on food services and how breakfast and lunch would be handled in the presentation. But, but Yana, we do have someone asking for a little bit more detail. What is the plan for student lunch? Can you maybe talk about the safety procedures and how we plan to execute that?
Yes, so what we're proposing is a grab-and-go style lunch where students will be coming into the cafeteria, going through the service line, picking up a packaged meal and then going back to their classroom or a designated area where they will eat their lunch at that point. What we will be putting in place for safety is four decals that will indicate six feet distance where students will be lining up. We'll be installing Plexiglas shields at each cash register. So our staff and students are protected. All of the PPE that we are using throughout the campuses will be in place as face coverings, face shields, gloves, sanitizers, all, all that kind of stuff. We are planning to do some very extensive training with our staff that will start actually a couple of weeks from now, that we will be going through all of that. Touchless transactions will also ensure that there is no cross-contact. Students and staff are not touching money during checkout process. And we will have obviously sanitizer available everywhere. We'll be encouraging students to wash their hands or use sanitizer before they enter the service area and before they start eating lunch as well, just to be on the safe side. The menu options will look just a little different. There, there will be a simplified menu just to ease speed of service and also to help with the, the packaging of each item. And students will, will still have an option to choose from. It's just, it won't be your typical menu that you're used to seeing every day. But we will make sure we have vegetarian options. We'll make sure we have something fresh, like a salad. And just to make sure everybody has a choice.
Thank you. Brandy, I think this one probably is coming back to you. It is an interesting question. When, when we do resume in-person classes and, you know, things hopefully start to edge back to normal a bit, you know, we're going to have folks with allergies and who catch a cold or other viruses. What will be our protocol to be able to understand what, when we might need to test for COVID and, and when is just a run-of-the-mill allergy reaction to, to high cedar or, or a cold?
This is, this is really, the COVID symptoms are very vague and generic. So this will be challenging for our staff and the school nurses all over the country. Everyone's talking about this. I've sent questions to our county health department and am waiting for some clarification because we really don't want to send every kid home that has the sniffles. The hard part is that we don't want to miss something and spread the infection either. So, you know, we will be, we will be working hard with, you know, we'll, we'll be interviewing the student. We'll be talking with parents about what is normal because some of the things that we'll be looking for is things that are out of the ordinary. So if your kid has the sniffles every single year at this same time, that's out of the ordinary. We're, we're looking for some guidance from the health department as to how we can have some discretion as far as that goes. For now, you know, the, the guidance that we have is pretty clear-cut and it's pretty, it's pretty severe. So that's not, that's really not really what we want to do. We're looking for some guidance about how we can have some discretion as far as that goes. But yeah, it's, it's going to be very frustrating because the symptoms are very generic. I completely understand that frustration.
Okay, thanks. Teri, how frequently would schools be germ-blasted or fogged?
That is ongoing. It's at, that, that is a process of, of course, through procurement, purchase order, things of that nature. And so when, when something of that nature, such as fogging or germ-blasting occurs, that, that's a long-term solution. In fact, it's, it's, it's basically an atomization of a disinfectant within the, the building and it lasts for months. And so we would like to get that accomplished as quickly as possible before we have any sort of in-person education in our facilities.
This question probably goes to those of you that are, are folks with campus administrator experience. Someone's asking if bandanas would be allowed as face coverings, but they're also thinking of the secondary levels. I think some of our, our dress code might be concerned about gang affiliations with certain bandanas. Is that, is that something that came up in the committee?
Actually, it's something that came up with the principals. And so the whole thing is this, based on the definition of face covering as of right now, that would be something that would be allowed as far as to use a bat, a bandana as a face covering. Within and talking to the principals, what they would more so look, look at was more so colors. More so had been the issue. So the issue within dress code So the issue within dress code had not been whether or not I have a bandana. It's more so so the color of the bandana and whether or not you see groups of students using or having the same color. So long short, yes, it can be used on a campus level when face-to-face. The campus administrator would be up to his or her discretion based on what he or she knows about the students and so forth to determine if in any way that there was additional meaning beyond the bandana. And then also, something is also that usually a high school issue. I saw someone ask the question about off-campus lunch. As of right now, we are recommending that we do not have off-campus lunch. And so now I know that each and every high school student is absolutely in love with me. Our reason for that specifically is because it did not make sense to us to put all those different processes in place to limit contact when it came to the lunch experience and then to allow students then to leave the campus and not know then and crossing different paths with other students or other facilities. So what we have said that when it comes to, there will be no off-campus lunch as it pertains to, and that's our recommendation at least for around our highest the processes. It just seemed like it was in conflict with everything that we were trying to do in and around the, the lunch processes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for two birds with one stone. I appreciate the multiple question. Can we address who's responsible for sanitizing in a classroom throughout the day? And, and if teachers play a role in that, will they be, you know, trained? How can they effectively sanitize, teach and do everything they need to do?
Jenny, I think I can take that question. And one of the, one of the processes of cleaning is to be able to obviously spray and wipe and, and be able to cover touch surfaces. The sanitation will also have to be with the students themselves because we can't rely upon a custodian or several custodians to be able to work throughout the, the building and, and cover all the touch surfaces as a student send or staff move and entry and/or unit in places. So through the training, that effective sanitation will be, I guess, through professional development for both staff as well as staff being able to train students of different ages or different cohorts. And so all students will be, will be assigned that helpful duty to help sanitize their space and/or their areas where they may have lunch and/or where they may be within the learning environment.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
Jenny, I think, uh, uh, just to add on to that, I think that it's everybody's, you know, everybody's duty to, 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 to make the environment as clean and safe as possible. And so I think that's part of the new normal. And I just want to give a shout out at this time. We've always taken great pride in having the best custodians in the entire state of Texas, but we may even have the best in the nation. So that's, that's soothing. But I think for just a simple answer to add to that, it's going to be everybody's, everybody's duty, I, I, I believe. So it's a new, uh, new age and with this new age, there's new ways of trying to make us safer and healthier every single day. So thanks for that question.
We had an interesting question. I think we know that so far we are anticipating when we go back to in-person. About, about half our parents have said they would like to stay virtual and half would be in-person. But if those, if those balances shift, do we have a cap at that point in time of how many we would take in-person?
Go ahead, Natalie.
From a safety, from a safety standpoint, it's more so, one of the things we've been looking at is as we get numbers in from our different surveys, is how does this work from campus to campus and even from classroom to classroom? So for example, if one campus has, it says, hey, you have a great model where we will be able to do that six feet social distancing within a classroom space, space in the square footage, then we can get that done. The issue comes in when for any campus, it goes beyond that number. And also one of the things to remember, it is also dependent on how the rules change within at the, at TA, at the governor's level, at the local level. So process that we're putting in place is always dependent on what the guidelines that someone else is giving us. So as we're working in the committee, right now, the thrust of the recommendations we're making is based on what is happening right now. But at the same time, we're creating parallel structures as far as what if the state says that you don't have to have a six-foot, six-feet social distancing? And then what would campus schedules look like? So know that we are giving you the rules as they exist, so to speak, based on our current reality while at the same time creating processes for other things as well. So if they should change for our campus, that's why it's so important for our parents to fill out those surveys. Because the campus principal's ability then to create a schedule where social distancing is put in place within the classroom, within the cafeteria and everywhere else is totally dependent on the information that we're going to get from parents so that we know by building by building how to schedule accordingly. So that is in fluctuation all the time. But we have talked about, hey, what if that doesn't exist on a campus? How do we use other campuses and other spaces potentially? Everything is on the table in order to make sure that we're meeting those guidelines.
Thank you, Natalie. What about elementary enrichment classes or specials like art, music and gym? Will those still happen?
Those will still hap-
I had some questions as well now.
In the reimagining education. No, it's okay. There was a document that was put out, I believe, last Friday, the reimagining education. We had those schedules. As far as right now, those special classes are are being looked at to be asynchronous. I know I'm freezing up. They're being looked at to be asynchronous, but still exist within the school day. So I know we have our other, another town hall coming up on Wednesday where they will specifically go through those schedules and what that looks like. But based on that schedule, right now, those special classes, as we're in a virtual environment, will be asynchronous.
Okay, we had a question. Tina, this is probably for you, asking if student temperatures will be taken prior to them being allowed on the school bus. And as you're answering that, maybe talking just a little bit about the, you know, what, what we have in place right now for transportation. You're, you're muted, Tina.
Sorry about that. A second time. No, at this time, of course, we'll follow all TA public health guidelines. That is not in the guidelines. You can just imagine why. We have 30, 40 kids trying to get on the bus. That would be impossible. We are doing actually the hand sanitizers, the masks. That's, that's what TA is telling us right now. Just a few things. I've been looking at the questions and, or the, the questions. And just, I can say that this is a very fluid situation right now. We will be always following our CDC and TA guidelines along with the district decisions. One thing about putting students is very, I guess, you would say our buses are very compromised with the amount of students in the room that is in a bus. So it is very important to actually, as Natalie was saying a little bit ago, is for everybody to do those surveys. There is a question about if you want to have transportation, we need that. Like I said, very fluid situation and we will look at the numbers and the resources that we have.
Thank you. We're going to go a few more minutes since we were a little, a little late in starting. We had a question, Terry, about folks that are used to using our facilities like Cub Scouts for meetings, even, even our PTA which would normally meet. How, how are we handling that in these times?
Unfortunately, uh, thank you for the question, Jenny. Unfortunately, there's, there's not a protocol to allow those club, club uses and/or other uses at this time. Our facilities are closed up until the time we start in-person learning. And so as we, we move closer to in-person learning, the district will have to ascertain whether or not the, there is a, I guess, a, a safety factor in being able to allow those clubs to be within our, our facilities. But at this point in time, again, the focus is on student safety and being able to expand that to club use and/or other uses such as facility rentals or uses are not in the best interest of some of the students' wellbeing.
Another couple of health-related questions. So Brandy, I'm, I'm assuming for you, but could you talk a little bit about what contract tracing would look like for, for our students? And then also what factors would cause us to need to completely shut down a campus, a single campus?
Well, let me just say, if, if there's a positive case in one of our classrooms, we'll identify any students or staff that were present in the same class. On the last day, the student was, who, who tested positive was present. So the last day that kid was there, then we will figure out what people were in the room. And those that are exposed will be excluded from campus for 14 days. And they'll need to monitor their symptoms at home. As far as the contact tracing goes, we're going to take the lead of our health department as far as that goes. We, like I said earlier, if there's a positive case in the school, everybody, regardless of the class, will know that there's a positive case. Everyone will be, will be notified that there was a positive case. But as far as the contact tracing goes, you know, we will have a COVID coordinator on each campus that will help us because the confidentiality piece is very important. We can't just say, hey, you know, so-and-so's positive. Anybody who was near so-and-so, you know, everybody, everybody red alert. We can't do that. The confidentiality piece is very important. So there will be a COVID coordinator that will identify on campus who was, who was possibly exposed. Close contact and we're going to be using the close contact definition of anybody who was directly exposed to their secretions, which hopefully won't happen because we're all going to have our face shields or masks on, right? Or anybody who was within six feet of somebody for longer than 15 minutes. So we're really going to be trying to not have a lot of close contact besides who are in our classroom or cohorts. And when we're in the hallways, we're going to be doing six feet apart. When we're moving throughout the building, we're going to be doing six feet apart. So we really would like to keep those protocols in place so we don't have to exclude any other people in the building for 14 days because that is just a day killer to have to call somebody's family and tell them your class was exposed and now you have to keep your kid home for 14 days. So the contact tracing will be, will be helping the health department to do that. The school nurses are about to have an extensive training as far as that goes and we will be, we'll be helping with the health department do that.
Great. Let's just do just a few more. I had, I think a really cut and dry one. Will juniors and seniors be able to drive to school?
I'm not saying, in fact, it would probably be preferred, especially if they're two miles out and would normally take the bus so it can free up seats for other students and we're able to create more distance on the bus. So yes, they will be able to drive to, to school.
Really practical one. How should we sanitize backpack supplies daily?
Jenny, I'll take that question. The, the use of a spray bottle with disinfectant or sanitizer and, and just a light spray mist on the, on the backpack and/or other, other hard surfaces and just a wipe is, is effective in, in being able to sanitize those, those type of soft materials. Typically, a backpack is a softer material. And so you want to just make sure that you just do a quick squirt or, or misting of those, those items.
Right. And I do want to acknowledge we've gotten a few questions about wanting to know when we're going to be releasing information about band and fine arts protocols. And I would encourage you guys to tune in if, if you're interested in that to our general overview session for middle and high school. We're going to have our director of fine arts will be on that call. But along that same line, Dwayne, I don't know if you want to just give some kind of overall general information about athletics and the, the indicators that we're sort of leaning on and, and looking at from making decisions there.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Yeah, we're, we're waiting, a waiting word from the UIL. In fact, we expect this week to learn some more information about potential practice start dates, potential season games getting underway. So really, we're, we're still in a little bit of a wait and see mode regarding that. And again, up until that point, we're simply following the, the protocols that have been shared by both the, the UIL and the TA. Our coaches have been, you know, very, very creative in, in coming up with ideas regarding social distancing and all the things that, that have been discussed tonight. So we're just kind of looking forward to a little bit more information and, and hopefully that'll happen this week.
And let me add, let me add to that, Jenny. I do think that the UIL is trying and working hard to, to try to field, you know, some opportunities for competition for student athletes. So, so they've been a little bit, I think, a little bit reticent in making a decision too quick. But at the same time, I think it's something that we all, you know, are hopeful for. But at the sa, at the same time, we understand that there are so many things that have to happen before these things occur. So, so again, UIL this week, as Coach Warrick points out, we're hoping that we, I even thought maybe it was going to be today that they'd give us more guidance. But once we get that, we'll be applying a lot of that to what our decisions are and how we can best utilize that. And obviously Coach Warrick and, and Lisa Roebuck are, are going to be a big, big part of that, how we move forward. And our band programs as well, I mean, some of the best in the state right here in central Texas, all of them right now are planning for virtual starts. Obviously with the Travis County Health Order that came in last week, shutting down some of these, until in-person occurs, you know, that, that's going to be interesting to see how that coincides with what the final outcome or the final fall season schedule will be from the UIL. So we're just, a lot of questions that parents have about their children's extracurriculars, we do as well because again, we're guided by the university interscholastically for the UIL.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I'm going to ask one more and then we'll wrap it up. Is there any changes to the drop-off processes due to the reduction of bus seats? And we know we're really encouraging parents to bring their students to school. So was that something that we considered in this, this planning?
The change to the process itself would more so be, how can we stagger students arriving to the campus so it's not causing backup in regards to transportation? We do understand that depending on the size of the campus and the location of the campus, that's a little bit more difficult than some. Specifically what we will be working with the campus administrator is looking at, how is it possible to stagger the start and even the release of students in order to facilitate that process?
Thank you, Natalie. So we did have many, many questions. We appreciate all of them. We hope we got to yours, but we have captured them all. We're going to use this to inform us for our FAQs. Some would probably maybe be more directed to another panel. So just as a reminder, this week on Wednesday night, we're going to be talking about what virtual learning is going to look like. We'll have our curriculum experts there and also student support services and how those can be delivered virtually and in this new environment. And then again, next week, we're going to have a specific general overview on elementary and another on secondary. So middle and high school. And if you weren't able to get in because we work at 500, please know that you can watch the live stream or you can watch a recording of it. But again, just keep checking back to our reimagining education webpage for answers. And then we'll look at doing more of these town halls that are maybe more focused so we can have smaller groups, smaller panelists, so a little bit more interaction. We want to especially thank our deaf interpreters tonight. And then we also are going to be looking at some, some Spanish, some in Spanish language for, for those who would feel more comfortable in that, with, with that sort of a setup. So again, thanks, everyone. Thanks for your patience. We'll get better at this, I promise, but we appreciate our panelists and we will see you next time.